Diane.
David, we are ready. We are all back and ready to get started.
We are recording.
So, Madam President, members of the Board, Thomas Mays from the Department of Education. I am in this capacity, the administrative law judge for the department. I have, I presided over the hearings on the next two agenda items on your meeting agenda today. Items nine and ten. We will start first with a brief explanation of your authority. Your authority to hear and decide appeals is in Iowa Code Section 290.1. And the, the lens to apply to both of these is reasonability. Not, I would have made a different decision, but the decision that the, the local board heard made was reasonable, even if I would have disagreed with it, if I were sitting as a local school board member. The first item before you today is in, in reexpulsion of student W. That is a randomly selected pseudonym. And the Hudson Community School District, this case involves a suspension for the remainder of the last school year and an expulsion for the coming school year for a social media message by student W that a student was going to shoot the school up. The school board and school officials, in conjunction with local law enforcement, investigated. The determinations made by the local school board was that student W did make this threat, even though it was a private threat, a private message, it then got, you know, out into the universe. Private messages tend not to stay private. And it is out in the universe and it caused a substantial disruption in that there was roughly 40 additional absences the first day of school after the private message was sent. Roughly 40 is the baseline. That Monday, even though the school community, community, school leadership communicated to the community, there is no threat. Law enforcement determined that there was no threat. There was still concern out in the community. And absence, absences, the first school day after the threat, 86 students were absent on Monday compared to 43 the previous Friday and 43 the next Monday. So a sort of a doubling of baseline, the baseline absence rate. So the school district, the leadership recommended a suspension for the remainder of the school year so that the student could accumulate credits and then an expulsion for the following school year. There was considerable and very skillful argument presented on both sides at this contested case hearing about two issues, two big buckets. First, whether or not the student committed the offense. And there was questions about law enforcement credibility. There are questions about, did he really do this? But the school leadership and school concluded reasonably in my recommendation that the student did commit this, this offense. The student, by his own concession, was blacked out drunk at the time that the, the message was made. That is a factor in his credibility. The second issue was whether or not the discipline imposed was reasonable. And that starts on pages six through nine of the proposed decision. A student is a student with disability. But through the IEP process, through that special education process, it was determined that this was not a manifestation of his disability. So he may be punished as if he were a general education student. The second argument in, you know, for want of a better word, mitigation, was that the individual was being bullied and harassed. And the evidence showed to me that the school was being protective of the student. He had been assaulted by a non-Hudson student on school grounds. Hudson took action. The student was subject to some crude graffiti in one of the student restrooms. Hudson took action, took the decommission, the restroom for student use and the, the evidence did not, did not support the notion of bullying and harassment in that there was not evidence of a power dynamic. The student and the person who made the crude graffiti remained in contact. The student W and through counsel addressed the fact that he could not have carried out the threat because he did not have access to firearms. But the threat, the issue is not whether or not you could do it. It's the ripple effect or the wake left behind the threat. The fact that it was private, a private message versus a broad public posting. I had addressed that previously in comments. There was some discussion about whether or not the district made it worse by calling attention to it. And I don't know how the district could not have called attention to a threat that, that, that was rippling and ping ponging through the community. And then the last was a discussion of alternatives such as transfer to a neighboring school districts, alternative program or a suspension or a shorter term of exclusion. Again, through the lens of reasonability versus preference. My recommendation to you is that the, you know, that might not have been the discipline I would have imposed, recommended if I were a superintendent. I'm not a superintendent because that works too hard. But in, because that work is too hard for me, my inclination was to, consistent with prior board precedent, defer to the local board's decision, to local leadership's decision. That is my recommendation to you. It is a, it is a proposed decision, not a final decision. You have independence of judgment. You can adopt my decision. You can, you can direct me to bring you a different decision. You can modify it after you hear arguments of counsel. But that is the, that's sort of the, the lay of the land right now. This is my proposed decision. It is not binding on you. It is a recommendation to you. And with that, both attorneys, Steve Widener for the district and, you know, for Cier for student W, both of whom were very skillful in their hearing and their post, post-hearing briefing are able to present such oral argument as the board is willing to entertain. So I turned it back over to President Axiotis to recognize counsel for oral argument.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Could I ask a question that doesn't really have anything to do with your oral argument? On page four, I don't quite understand that second major paragraph where the student is going to be expelled for a year. And yet it said it will still be possible for, to earn enough credits to graduate with his cohort. How is that possible if he's going to miss a whole year of school?
That's the, that's the evidence from the superintendent that there's ability to accelerate. There's ability to remediate once the student returns. That it is, that it would be mathematically possible to, consistent with Hudson Community School District's board policy, board policy on credits to accumulate enough credit.
With his disability.
Well, two points on that. For, first of all, the disability. Yes, even with his disability, it's possible that, it's possible to, the superintendent and the high school principal testified credibly in my mind that it would be possible for him to accumulate sufficient credits.
So he can't take credits at home for that year he's expelled?
That was the board policy.
What's the board policy on the, on social media? Is it if somebody makes a threat that they get expelled from school?
So the policy on student conduct is bottom of page three, top of page four. And the broad global policy is if something substantially disrupts the learning operations, if it's something substantially disrupts school, the disciplinary measures in that policy are listed on the top of page four, including but not limited to removal, detention, suspension, probation and expulsion. So expulsion decisions are typically case by case. And Madam Chair, I would recommend that Ms. Faurier proceed first with oral argument.
Okay. Sounds good to me. We just, oh, Ms. Faurier, is she on?
She's on mute.
Oh, yeah. Okay. You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, in this case, it's not reasonable to infer that this message was a threat or that it was sent by student W. The evidence presented in this case show that the mother of the student was contacted by Facebook Messenger by law enforcement regarding a message he received through a chain of other individuals. That officer testified at the hearing before the administrative law judge Mays that at least three other individuals had this screenshot, which is a photograph of someone else's phone that was presented to the chief of police to reach, to reach him. And so the first question I think is, is it reasonable to infer that student W sent the message? And so I think that based on the testimony presented, the evidence presented, it's hard to determine where the message even came from. The officer testified at the hearing through a chain of individuals that he received it, but that the only identifying information on the photograph of someone else's phone was the name of an individual that matched the name of student W at the top of that message. So there wasn't any phone number, location, date and time of the message. There was no way to show with any specificity when it was sent, by whom, other than the name of, that matches the name of student W at the top of the message. There's no context to the message. There's no indication of who the recipient of the message was based on that photograph of a phone. So we have no way to tell or know what was happening before, during or after, or what this sentence was even about. And then when Officer Banks was questioned at the hearing about why he was concerned about Hudson School, he just said, well, I just assumed it was about our school. When they believed that the recipient was a student from another school district in a neighboring district. The officer testified, you know, that he didn't contact that other district about any purported threat when this conversation, they believe was happening between two kids from separate districts. The only person that got any attention was student W relating to Hudson Schools when there was no indication of what even the context, what even the school was even talking about. There wasn't any way to tell when the message was sent. The officer Banks testified that he received the photograph of the phone through his social media account sometime on May 1st of 2021, which is a Saturday outside of school hours. And so it was unknown when this was purportedly sent by student W. There was little to no investigation into the source of the message before the school district issued a news report. So when the school district says there was a substantial disruption to the operations of the school, the only people that knew about this photograph of the phone were these three individuals that had it before they gave it to the police. And the police and the school district then put out a news report, which in turn caused the community to panic. And there was nothing to indicate, you know, any investigation into what happened. Officer Banks testified at the hearing that the school still held school on Monday, that he wasn't concerned about the threat and that it was worth looking into, but that the threat was incredible. So that he didn't believe at that point that he was concerned. So we would, we would say it's not reasonable to even infer that student W was the author of the post or that the substantial disruption was caused by him. Arguably, the substantial disruption came from the school district putting information out into the community before they had the information. And then secondly, the punishment of expulsion in this case is also unreasonable. You heard that student W is a special education student. There was testimony provided at the hearing that he had other accommodations for his special education that were not included in his IEP. And although it was not determined to be a manifestation of his disability, he still is struggling with mental health conditions during this time. The mother raised issues of that to the school and she believed he was being accommodated for that. She was unaware that that was not part of his disability. So we believe that the evidence presented by the local school, school board is not reasonable to show, you know, that he would be able to even graduate. He's supposed to be in 11th grade next year. If he's expelled for a year, that means he misses an entire year of school. He's already on an IEP for reading and math. So if he misses an entire year of school, to think that in one year he could make up that year plus any deficiencies he may have had seems unreasonable. Also, the mother testified at the hearing that she did a records request for similar types of conduct, threats, punishment from other districts. And there wasn't any punishment as extreme as this or as long as this punishment in any other district for the same types of offenses or even offenses that were worse than this fence. And so we would argue that the punishment does not fit the facts of this case. We would ask you to rescind the expulsion, allow for attendance at an alternative school or allow for a suspension where student W could attend school by Zoom or something along those lines, or that he could leave and go to another district or that the expulsion only be for one semester so that he doesn't lose an entire school year for school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would now ask you to invite Steve Widener to present public oral argument on behalf of the appellate.
Thank you. Mr. Widener?
Good morning, Madam President, members of the Board, Judge Mays. I'm not in my office, obviously. I'm in, very thankful that I can be present with you with this wonderful technology. I and my partners have always been pleased to represent the Hudson Community School District because they're a district that's very proud of their efforts to provide a safe and comfortable learning environment for their students. And the proposed decision that's before you lays out facts that are supported by the only credible evidence in the record as opposed to speculation, what might have been, and so on. But these facts show dramatically a direct and substantial interference with that important learning environment. Now, I'm not, my purpose is not to reargue the case to the board. Rather, what, what I want to urge the board to do is examine the proposed decision. And, and you will see in that proposed decision, again, based upon the only credible evidence in the record, that you can proceed to find several things. One is that the social media statement, for real, I'm going to shoot that school up, was sent on student W's phone by him. The, the credible evidence in the record only points to him. The speculation that somebody else could have had his phone, might have done this, might have been, there's no evidence showing any of that. All of the evidence in the record points to student W. Secondly, that the, the statement that you'll see in the proposed decision became public and caused a reasonable reaction of fear for the safety of the students and staff. And that left the district's administration uncertain throughout the entire time of the investigation as to whether or not they should have school the following Monday. What happened?
Sorry, we're here, we're just adjusting the volume. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, sorry.
And thirdly, that this statement caused fear and uncertainty among the families in the Hudson School community and the staff in spite of the efforts of the administration to reassure. And that's evident in the dramatically higher than usual absenteeism on the following Monday and the need throughout the day to, as the record will show, to further reassure the staff. And, and fourthly, the discipline that was rendered here by the Hudson Board on student W was very consistent with other disciplines that had been handed out in, in the district. And you will see that in the record. And the other things that caused expulsion were possession of drugs, possession of a firearm in the parking lot, bullying and harassment. And those expulsions all occurred, were not appealed, for what that means. But this, in the administration's opinion and counsel's opinion, this particular misconduct was far more severe to the entire school community than those other infractions that also resulted in expulsion. And we feel that the proposed decision applies the current standard of review. It's there for you to see, the correct standard of proof and the correct analysis of the facts in the record. And all of those standards have been recognized by you and your other decisions or in case law that's presented in the proposed decision. This decision is, was thorough, in our opinion, based upon the facts in the record, was well-written for easy understanding and easy for you to follow and, and make a good decision. And that they, it correctly finds the relevant facts and, and applies the appropriate legal standards to reach the conclusion that Judge Mays did. We urge the board, as did Judge Mays, that the board should affirm the decision of the Hudson Board of Directors that the, that the student should be suspended for the rest of the previous school year and expelled, expelled, excuse me, for the following school year for these infractions. And that that, according to your standards, is a reasonable conclusion for the Hudson Board to reach and, and so the decision should be affirmed by you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So does the board have any questions for me?
I'm assuming there's, is there zero tolerance policy for drugs and guns?
That was what was in the, in the record.
Yeah, which is different than the other policy, right? So zero tolerance means you get expelled. This one was a social media post.
And for the board's benefit, this is, these are exhibits that were admitted in the hearing. This is the social media post. I ask you to exercise some discretion because there's, the, the pseudonym would be busted. This, this refers to the student's actual name. Or what, in, in regards to what Attorney Faurier said, this, what purports to be the student's name. So it, that is the social media posted issue.
So there's a time on here and I thought everyone said they didn't know when it was sent.
Well, that was the time it was received by Chief Banks. Or that Chief Banks sent it to, if, there's no timestamp on the message itself.
So if, is there any way that this student can be expelled for the year and still receive educational services? Because I would, I would think he could, but highly unlikely that he might be able to finish everything in his senior year.
There's two layers to that question. First of all, since he is a student with disability, he will receive all of the services called for in his IEP, right? He has academic goals. If there are additional goals added through the special education process, he would receive those services just in a different location. Second, that is within your sound discretion as, as board members, if you find that the decision of Hudson was not reasonable. So I think that there's a threshold finding first. Was Hudson's decision reasonable? If not, what's a reasonable alternative? I, I would caution, based on your prior precedent, of substituting judgment for something that is otherwise reasonable.
So I just went back up, you saying that he, student W will be provided education services?
He will be provided special education services during the term of his expulsion.
What does that mean?
A specially designed instruction that addresses his special education needs. He's got a couple academic needs. And I believe subsequent to this, mental health or challenging behavior services were added, but subsequent to the decision itself.
But he won't have any schoolwork.
He will have specially designed instruction that doesn't bear, that, based on Hudson's policy, will not generate credits. He will still be receiving specially designed instruction aligned with core content standards, but will not necessarily be receiving credit for that.
Well, I'd like to go back to my first question. So if, if there's zero tolerance, zero tolerance for possession of guns and drugs, is that correct? Board policy?
Zero tolerance for gun is, is a federal requirement.
So that's expulsion?
Yes.
That's what's being used as the example is that this treatment is the same as equal as that, which I don't see as the same. Because one has automatic expulsion.
Well, I think here it has the policy and they're saying that, you know, if there's a, if some student conduct violates this policy, which is on page three. Yeah.
Yeah, I get that.
And so it's up to it, including, it could be up to it, including expulsion. It doesn't have to automatically be that, but it could be.
I guess my, so I wouldn't rank those as the same type of offense.
But is it reasonable for them?
Yeah.
That's the question. It's not whether we think we might have come to a different conclusion. Was there any forensic examination of the cell phone that was delivered to the law enforcement?
Not in this record. And to her credit, Attorney Faurier skillfully cross-examined Chief Banks about, do you have any special training? Did you, was there any forensics? And it was his opinion, but not supported by any computer or, but that was, that was something that I, that was something that I, is, when crafting this proposed decision factored in. There wasn't any forensic evidence, but there wasn't any evidence of anybody else.
Was there any interview by law enforcement of student W?
Yes. There was an interview the weekend of the event, the, the weekend of, between the incident and school.
But no admission?
A denial.
Is that when he said that, the student said that they were blackout drunk?
Correct, and that I wouldn't have done this because it would have offended my father. His late father. So there, there was a, there was a denial that had two prongs. I wouldn't have done it. And I was also drunk. So yes, there was, short answer, there was a law enforcement interview in the course of this, in the course of Hudson Community School District's, law enforcement in Hudson cooperated.
And so basically, our role as a state board is to determine if the Hudson School Board acted reasonably in their decision.
Correct. Step one. And then step two.
Yes, you don't get.
Right.
Right.
Step two is an alternate remedy, either reversal or modification of my proposed decision. If the recommended decision before you, if you find that either the recommended decision or, most importantly, Hudson CSD's board's decision was not reasonable, then, then the skip pattern is crafted an alternate remedy.
Is it legal to expel for an entire year?
Yes.
And then they're not allowing that student to go anywhere else? That's how I understand it.
Correct. If I am, if I, there's a separate state law that if I'm expelled in an attempt to enroll in a different district, my, the expelling district has to release me.
What's the point of not releasing them?
That's, that's a situation beyond this. I don't, I wouldn't want to speak for a hypothetical board.
I'm not sure receiving district would accept.
The student who's been expelled.
That's not, that's not.
Yeah, that's on the table.
I, I would hope that we affirm the proposed decision.
Good move. Is there a second?
Second.
Should I do a?
Roll call, please.
Roll call. Sorry, girl.
Axiotis?
I.
Fuller?
I.
Kane?
I.
Nedler?
I.
Robbins?
I.
Van Gundy?
No.
Wayne?
I.
So elevator speech, the parties have the ability to challenge this in state district court, either in Blackout County or Polk County, and they have further appeal rights. And with that, I would like to thank my colleagues, Nina Forzier and Steve Whiteener, for skillfully presenting this both to you and to me at the contested case here.
Yeah. Now, the next.
The next appeal on your schedule today is item ten, CF, in Ames Community School District. This is an open enrollment matter.
David gives Mary Van Hughcliff.
Yes, he's on the line.
This is an open enrollment appeal. Appeal, the open enrollment paperwork specified harassment as a reason for filing after the March first deadline. The student in this district is currently open enrolled into Ames. The student in this district could return at any time to their resident district. What this application is for is for an alternate receiving district. The application specified harassment. The alleged nature of their harassment was based on the student's race and gender, the student's status as a white male. The school board, Dr. Hawkins, at the time was, he's taken a new title, but at the time he was responsible for equity for investigations. He made a recommendation to the school board that the application did not sufficiently set out bullying and harassment that would justify filing after the March first deadline. Where I, sitting as an administrative law judge, had a problem with was the, what was reported to the parent, who is here with us and who will be presenting oral argument as soon as my summary is done. The form provides a spot to check. What, you know, what did the board do? In that form, it did not acknowledge no harassment. What the form did, it just said late filed. So the form, the open enrollment form, did not acknowledge the claim made by the parent. And then the cover letter from the former superintendent said the school board denied it because it was filed late. The cover letter did not acknowledge the basis of the claim. And although Dr. Hawkins worked the process, somewhere the process fell, fell off. Somewhere there was a missing link in the process, and in my mind, and is my recommendation to you, I don't think it's sufficient to say, well, everybody knows what this was about. I think the end user experience in this case, the, the family did, the family's claim was not clearly identified in the final communication from the district. Had it been so, I would have been inclined to continue to reach the merits, since it wasn't, and based on similar, but not identical, state board precedent where the school administration didn't even investigate. Here they investigated, but did not communicate. I think there, my recommendation to you is that there needs to be alignment between claim, investigation, school board action, final decision as reported to the parent. That not being in alignment, and the parent, in this case, pointing it out during the hearing as completely evading our lawful post deadline reason. That is why my recommendation to you is to send this case back to the Ames Board of Directors to squarely address the, the claim that the parent made, and it completely address it so that the final decision, the end user experience, is the same, so that the parent has a final decision, one way or another, addressing her claim. And with that, the parent is here to present argument. Since the recommend, recommended decision does not reach the merits, one of your options is to direct me to bring back a proposed decision reaching the merits. Another one of your options is to reach the merits today and direct me to write a decision one way or another. But where I am, based on this record, my recommendation to you, based on this record, and analogous, but not identical prior board precedent, I'm recommending that this go back to the district for, to close the loop. And with that, first of all, any questions for me?
Did the board discuss the merits?
There was a bulk, and there was a bulk discussion, or is reflected in the minutes of.
This was concerned among all the other ones that?
Right, and the specific discussions in concerned Ames CSD's discontinuance of a virtual option for elementary schools. That there, there was no specific discussion of this case.
Okay.
Board governance, I don't know if there needs to be, but not reflected in the minutes.
Any other questions? Nope.
And at this time, I would recommend providing a brief opportunity for oral argument to the unrepresented parent, Ms. CW.
CW, okay.
So I do not use my name, is that?
You may use your name. This is, you may use your name. My use of initials is just a writing convention, so.
Right, okay. All right, so I am just a parent, no, no attorney. I have had three children in the, go through the Ames school system. The subject of this case is my youngest, who has two years left, his junior and senior year. I was an educator myself, just for some background, at University of Illinois in Chicago, and then Iowa State and DMAC before my current career, and I was also a stay-at-home mom for ten years, and I was heavily involved in the schools, in the Ames schools, and I volunteered a lot. I was in the classroom, I was heavily involved with what was going on. I was very pleased with the Ames schools overall. But about six years ago, when my oldest was a freshman in Ames High, I started to observe some serious concerns of one type of political view being allowed and encouraged in the Ames schools that made other children, other students feel uncomfortable because it, it never, it was not open, it was not balanced, okay? So that started subtly, as I explained to Dr. Hawkins, and it grew, it became more pervasive, more prevalent over the years. Like I said, it was, it was subtle, I, it was just reports I heard from my children. I saw it in various ways, and it was tolerated, then encouraged by a lot of teachers. And then specifically, the last two years, I noticed my two sons coming home, reporting a lot of strange, one-sided views about them as white males and other groups as more protected, and them as needing to take a backseat and be, and as privileged and kind of responsible for oppressed groups and protected groups. And I am, you know, having always taught international students, I am very, very aware of the need to be compassionate to all groups of people. And, and I thought that Ames Schools was interested in being equally welcomed to all student groups, but however, that has become very clear this, especially this past year, that that is no longer the case in Ames. And so at first, I just thank you for your time to review this case. And while I understand Honorable Judge Mays's recommendation to reverse and remand the Ames denial of my open enrollment application, back to Ames for review, because that was one of my problems, one of my arguments, reasons for appeal, was that Ames didn't really investigate, although Dr. Hawkins had one phone conversation with me, unprepared, and very, very quickly decided, well, I'm going to recommend denial of this to the board. But when it got to the board, it never even got discussed. They never, I didn't realize till later, till after I appealed my case, that they never even contacted the teacher that I had named on my application, that would, that was in support of this. They never asked her for information, for documentation, they never contacted her. And they didn't ever investigate my claims that my son no longer felt comfortable physically at Ames High, his, his physical safety, he never, no longer felt comfortable there. He's not a big guy, and the student body at Ames, whether the administration is aware of it or not, has become bitterly divided, and it's very sad. It wasn't that way years ago, it really wasn't. And it has recently, because of teachings that are, I know that discriminatory teachings are no longer allowed in Iowa, but I also know, as an educator, that kind of entrenched view takes a lot of time to repair and, and reset. And so I've decided, and my family has decided, that for my son, his last two years of school, this is all he has, we're done there. It is no longer a good environment for him, it is a hostile environment to white males. And, and just to give you some perspective, my older son, his first, his first girlfriend, friend was black, and I didn't even know it till later. His current one is a different race, and they're being told that, that they have to presume themselves as naturally privileged against other groups. And that is not how, that, that's, that's a false assumption, and schools should not even take that role to, to divide students in this way. What they need to do is educate, educate what happened in history so we can have compassion for different groups that experienced different types of oppressions, all types of groups all over the world, all colors, and all backgrounds. Um, so let me get back to what I'm asking for. Um, I do respect Judge Mays's decision, based on the first count of the fact that Ames never really even looked into my concerns. Okay, but, but I do ask the members of this board to alter that decision, to simply reverse that decision, Ames's decision to deny my request, and to grant my request for release from open enrollment of Caleb, of my son, in Ames for these reasons. Sorry, I went on a run this morning, didn't drink enough. Um, first, my first reason is the time constraints here. The time constraints associated with this loop, this action where it would go back to Ames and then likely be denied, because they've already indicated that they want to deny my request, and then it would force me to appeal again. And in that timeframe, I'm supposed to already be signing my son up for his classes for the, for his junior year, and they're important because he, he put himself on an accelerated math program. He's, he's concerned, he's told me several times, Mom, when is this going to be decided? Because I really need to get into the right classes for me. So that's one reason I ask you to deal with this here, instead of having it go back to Ames. Another reason is I just believe this case and this matter needs to be dealt with by the state, at the state level. If this case goes back, back to Ames, you would be putting me in the position where I would be asking the Ames Board to rule against themselves, okay? Which is illogical, and it wouldn't happen. There is a, they've demonstrated, and I've seen, that there is a clear conflict of interest here. If you look at everything I presented in the hearing last week, including my specific examples, which are not written in the exhibits, it is inappropriate for this case to be dealt with by Ames, in my assessment. It has been clearly demonstrated that Ames has preferred to ignore my request and to mock it, okay? And I'll explain that. In exhibit F, I shared with Judge Mays my effort way back in January. As I told you, I've been watching this for several years. I saw it as a subtle thing, preferring a far-left political viewpoint on things injected into the system. I don't mind left views, as long as there's a right view presented equally to it. But there was a clear leaning of injecting these, this one political viewpoint, and that grew, okay? And at first I saw that it was tolerated, then encouraged by lots of teachers. I was also Iowa State, I know what, what was going on, on there in the academic elitist world of what we should be teaching our children. And so I saw it encouraged in many, many different classes, literary, literacy classes, social science classes, and biology classes, all sorts of classes. This left political viewpoint was presented in isolation by many, many teachers, okay? And, but then this year, when I saw it actually required, and I saw that the Ames administration was making efforts to intentionally encourage a certain political view without presenting opposing views, as, as an educator would do. This is no longer education, and I had a problem with that. So I wrote a letter to the board, to Dr. Nyberg, the, the Ames High principal, to the superintendent, but my boys begged me not to, not to write them, not to put my name to the, to, to this letter or this complaint, for their sake, because they have already experienced, or they had already experienced, targeting by many different teachers. I gave examples of this in the hearing. If you want me to give those again, I will, but I, I don't know if you listened to the transcript. But they've already been targeted, and they were fearful of further targeting from teachers, from administration. They didn't want their name associated with my complaint. So I wrote it anonymously, and I explained in that letter that I wrote to the board. that I wrote to the board and the superintendent and the principal. I wrote them, I explained in the letter why I was writing this anonymously, because my boys begged me to not attach their name to it. Well, um, I I brought this letter I I because Dr. Hawkins said, well, I haven't heard any formal complaints. And I said, yeah, well, it's been pretty hard to and I'm not the only parent that is afraid to bring up complaints. I'm I only decided to show you this letter now because I know there, I've investigated my options and I know Caleb doesn't have to be there and be targeted and neither do I. I am, I'm just hoping that we can go through the the proper channels and get him released because that's the best thing for him in this environment. Um, so I I I gave them that letter back in January before there was any litigation at all. I got no response. No response from the superintendent, no response from the principal, no response from board members about my concerns. It was called a Concerned Parent of Iowa Letter. I think it's in Exhibit, let's see, Exhibit F. Okay, my father dropped that letter off to the district, paper copies to everyone in the district and I emailed them through this email and they could have responded me but to me, but nobody did. They ignored that. To me, that shows a specific bias on their part, a specific message that they are not interested in this concern of mine. And I was just representing one of many, many parents that I already knew about. So, um, and then last week in the hearing, I noticed that, and my father noticed this too, that the Ames Council actually mocked the statements that my father made under oath regarding the reports of his sons to him and to myself. If you listen to the recording, if that's possible, let her know, but she in there, in her uh, final statements, I believe it was, made um, uh, my, with a mocking tone, uh, made a comment about this claim that all social problems are um, are caused by white privilege. Okay, uh, my dad was actually the one who brought that up, that my sons had reported to him and me that it was a regular, regular occurrence that several different teachers would tell them things like, what's what's the problem here? What's the answer here? Hayes and Caleb, what is the answer to this problem? And if they didn't answer white privilege is the problem to this social problem, they would get dirty looks. They would um, be directed, I I I don't know, to the correct answer, but I remember one answer in particular from one teacher was um, when when my son tried to give a benign answer because he knew that he wasn't free to tell his own thoughts about this problem. Um, he said, I don't know. And the teacher replied, you don't know, huh? Well, sounds like you need to get in touch with your whiteness. And um, it was just little things like that. They knew they were not free to bring up their own. Um, they they learned over the last two years, they are not free to um, give their own viewpoints on things. Um, give their, to be themselves and to be accepted. They had to uh, take take a backseat to whatever the teacher's views would be. Um, and while I, you know, while I understand and I admire and respect the intent of um, encouraging compassion for all groups. The actual um, carrying out of this uh, effort has been an extreme bitter failure. The the student body at Ames High is extremely bitterly divided and the community knows it. The parents know it. The kids definitely know it. Um, it comes out in social media. Um, and Caleb's counselor, who who talked with him separately, he understands it. And it it's not tolerable. And I'm not going to watch anymore um, and allow my kid to uh, continue in this environment. Um, so the bias in Ames is one of the reasons I wish, I I'm asking you to take care of this matter here. Um, not only for me, I know it's, I know it's, for me, it's Caleb I'm concerned about my son. And yet I know the, it's a bigger issue than Caleb. It's a bigger issue than Ames. It is a community issue. I personally have talked to many superintendents and board members in surrounding uh, surrounding districts while I was looking for my options. And they are all concerned about this issue, how Ames is handling the this so-called encouragement to be inclusive. Uh, that how it's being carried out is extremely destructive. And um, and I I realize that this is a different kind of harassment. It's a new kind. All types of harassment are, should not be tolerable. Um, this is a new kind, so it's strange, but I ask that you all deal with this, please, here at the state level because there's clearly bias at Ames. They've ignored me. They've mocked my father who um, spent his entire life being a diagnostician in the medical field, getting at the facts. And she mocked him as if what he was saying was untrue and ridiculous. Um, so Ames is clearly biased. Uh, it's silly for me to go present to them, I ask them to rule against themselves. It's, it doesn't make any sense. Um, and the time constraints don't allow for it. I realize it's um, it's a different type of case. But it's time that it be considered and looked at carefully. And I think it has to be done at the state level. I don't think that this is something I think all communities, not just Ames, are concerned about how this issue is being carried out in the classroom and by administration, how it's being communicated. So is that clear, what I'm asking?
Alright, thank you. Okay. Do I go?
Um, you may take, you may resume.
Okay.
Um, and now um, some opportunity for Attorney Miriam Day Hughclam, who represented AMCSD at the contested case hearing.
Done?
Yes, yes she is.
Alright, you can go ahead, Mira.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, members of the board, and and thank you for hearing uh, this appeal. First, I I've wanted to address the claim that uh, I or my client had mocked the parent or or her parent who were at the hearing. It certainly was not anybody's intention and I think the record would speak for itself. Um, I hold my professional conduct of the utmost importance and do not believe that I did, nor would I have. Uh, in this case, the proposed decision from Mr. Mays recommends a remand back to the Ames School Board. Uh, the district does not resist that. In fact, in the interest of time and in ensuring that a a prompt decision can be rendered, has already that meeting to occur during the uh, board's upcoming meeting on August ninth, on Monday evening. Uh, the parent has already been notified of that and invited to come and participate and speak to the board in closed session if she chooses to do so. If the board does decide, if this board, the state board, does decide to take up this case on the merits, we would encourage you not to do so today, simply for the reason that there was significant testimony in the record relating to the allegations that were made that really cannot be adequately summarized um, here and now. But as an example, while uh, the parent claims that the school did not adequately investigate, Associate Superintendent Hawkins did complete a review of all bullying and harassment forms and other online information to determine whether this student had ever been uh, reported by anybody to have been the target of harassment at Ames. And determined that he in fact had not. This was also admitted in the hearing record by the parent that he had not been the target of specific acts of harassment as required by the Department of Education's rules set forth in the Hannah T. Appeal Decision. He also, this is Dr. Hawkins, also contacted building administration to see if they were aware of any concerns about harassment directed at the student. Uh, and they were not aware of any specific uh, or general concerns of harassment involving the student. Dr. Hawkins also contacted the parent by phone. He explained the department's standards for open enrollment with which the district was trying to follow. And again, those are the Hannity factors. I can go through those if that would be helpful, but just briefly, it requires there to be specific acts of harassment directed at the student who the subject, uh, who is the subject of the open enrollment request, has to demonstrate that the harassment was not known or at least the extent of it could not have been known by the March first deadline, so as to excuse a uh, an untimely. So Dr. Hawkins attempted to explain this to the parent and asked her for any information that she could provide, any examples that she could provide relating to acts of harassment against her son. Um, she did not provide any during that call. Dr. Hawkins then followed up with her by email following that call to again, explain the the process and ask whether there were any specific acts of harassment toward her son. And she responded in an email that was admitted as an exhibit during the hearing, that no, in fact, there were not. As Mr. Mays said, when he was presenting this case, the parent has the option of rescinding the open enrollment at any time and returning the student to his home district of Nevada. The reason given in the hearing for why that was not appealing to the family was not due to harassment or fear that he would be harassed in Nevada School District as well. It was simply the the distance between uh, their residence and the attendance center that he would be attending in that school district. The petitioner, uh, appellant requests that this be dealt with by the state, but it's important for this board to be aware of its jurisdiction under Iowa Code Section two ninety point one. If, as Mr. Mays has determined, the Ames School Board needs to conduct a a more thorough hearing at the board level relating to the allegations, then this board simply doesn't have jurisdiction to reach a decision on the merits. This is no more of a conflict for the Ames School District to hear this appeal than in any other appeal involving repeated acts of harassment under those Hannah T. Factors, because in every case, that requires the school board to determine that there was harassment that it was not able to adequately address or remedy. So to the extent that the appellant claims that this case can't be heard fairly by the Ames School District Board, we would deny that. The Ames School District Board is prepared to hear this case as an impartial and neutral fact-finder. And to the extent that it would have to make findings that would be apparently against their own interests, that is really no different than what is required from any school board hearing, a harassment uh, uh, appeal to an open enrollment application. The specific incident that was referenced by the parent her comment to her child, uh, this was fleshed out more thoroughly during the open enrollment hearing. Um, the parent was not able to identify which teacher allegedly made this comment and stated that it had happened during the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. Uh, again, without a more thorough uh, review of the entirety of the record, we don't believe it would be uh, appropriate for the state board to attempt to reach a decision on the merits during today's meeting. However, we would note that it, this is a claim that is virtually impossible for the school district to have investigated as it wasn't reported at the time. And and even now, the name of the employee who allegedly made this comment is is still not known. Uh, but it also falls short of the Hannah T. Requirements because it occurred well before the March first deadline. Had the parents' concerns existed at that time, which they appear in the record, uh, they seem to have gone back by, you know, for several, the last several years, uh, a timely open enrollment application could have been made on March first. So in closing, the Ames School District would not resist Judge Mays remand back to the district for further proceedings. Uh, if this board takes this case up on the merits or directs Mr. Mays to do so, we would simply ask that the board apply the Hannity Factors and it will be clear that the application does not meet those factors. And an affirmance of the Ames School Board's denial of the open enrollment is warranted. Again, thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you.
And before entertaining any questions that you may have of me, whenever a school board makes a non harmless procedural error, the remedy that this board has always applied is a remand. There has never been a s- a situation where this board said some other board makes the decision or some other person makes the decision because the school board is statutorily constituted to decide these issues in the first instance. So, um, because there was a non-harmless error in that there was a disconnect somehow between the claim and the end user experience. Um, the appropriate remedy, if you adopt my decision, is a remand to the district with directions to comply with my And with that, I have this, I circulated Exhibit F, which Ms. Uh, C W, Ms. C W referred to in her uh, statement. You have all had a chance to look at Exhibit F. Um, with that, any questions for me about my proposed decision or arguments that uh, Ms. C W or Attorney Ben Hughclam made?
I have a procedural question. So this hearing is now set. That I hear August nine?
The the school board has set a hearing for Monday to comply with, if the state board adopts my proposed decision.
Okay, then what happens after Monday?
Uh, after Monday, uh, if the parent, if if the family remains aggrieved, they may appeal again.
Back to you.
Back to the board.
Oh, so we come back to here?
Well, proposed decision, final decision, oh, yes.
So, but, so there'd be no further hearing before you because of any, I mean, I'm, I don't know what's gonna happen Monday.
But let's
you know, is there, is it conceivable that you have a role before it comes back here? That's that's what I'm trying to get at.
It would come back through me unless a party moves to recuse me. It would come back through me to you.
But you don't have another hearing.
It depends on the record made below.
Got it. That's, that's
It depends on the record.
So there could be another hearing.
There could be another hearing. It could be submitted on the record. It might not, there might not need be an appeal at all.
So what I'm driving at, given the twists and turns and the timing issue, not that that, just just because I'd like to know the answer, is it possible for August nine to happen? If something new to happen in front of you that that happens and that we somehow consider this virtually or something before school starts? I'm just asking if it's possible. I'm not suggesting how I think. I just would like to know the process.
That would be a modification of my proposed decision. In my proposed, which is within your prerogative. My proposed decision, the state board does not retain jurisdiction. If you would like to retain jurisdiction.
Understood.
You you may
So I would depend on what you do after that.
Right, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Emotion?
I motion that the state board reverse the decision of the Ames Community District per the recommendations and bring the end matter back for the consideration. Back to
So you're adopting?
Attorney Mays.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved inside again.
Roll call, please.
Axiotis.
Hi.
Oler.
Hi.
Hi.
Nedler. Robbins.
Hi.
Lee and Gundy. Wayne.
Hi.
Right, uh, and for the parties, um, President Axiotis needs to sign this decision. It will be based on today's date. Today's date will trigger any appeal rights that you have under Chapter seventeen A of the Administrative Procedure Act.
Okay. Sorry, can you, what, what's motion? I do, here she's spacing the other way.
Um, elevator speech, the board adopted my proposed decision. And Adam Chair, are we taking a break?
Yes, yes, a five-minute break.